We'll call a meeting to order for the voting of the leaders.
Let's do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue Will called, please.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
You.
Councilmember Salzweedle-Zansen and Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here. Motion to approve Jim's absence.
I'll make a motion to approve Jim's absence. I'll support.
Any discussion?
Sue.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. Motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved, supported.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle-Zansen, Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right. Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda. No? All right. Gold business, item A city, protect plane.
Good evening, mayor, city council. From our last meeting, just to update you what we've done regarding to preparation for the ballot proposal. In a few minutes, you're going to be, you're going to be voting to approve a revised ordinance that, if you recall back in May when we presented it to you for the, to put the income tax on the ballot, the Attorney General's office and the governor have signed off on it, but they did want to make a couple of quick, I mean, quick changes to the, to the language. So you'll be voting on that in a minute, if you so choose to implement that. Also, I have met with a company called City Tax. City Tax handles, they handle the software for all the cities in Michigan that collect, that collect the income tax. They also do administer, on behalf of municipalities, all components of the tax. They will, they will, basically, you can contract with them and they can, they can administer everything up to, and if possible, if you want, including the collection. They, they, they're based out of Eaton Rapids and they handle a number of communities in, 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 all the, all the 24 communities, they have some role in, in Michigan, but they also handle a number of communities in Ohio and in Georgia. In Ohio, they don't, cities don't get their, their revenue from property tax. In Ohio, they use income tax and sales tax. Each municipality can levy a percentage income tax, or one or two percent, or they can also levy, plus they can also levy in addition to their state sales tax, local sales tax, but we don't have that option in Michigan. So he, they're very experienced and well versed in how to do this. I'm awaiting a proposal from them and I anticipate having them come to an upcoming council meeting. There's things that we can start doing that will be of no cost to us, that we can start doing internally. So if this does pass, we can get moving as soon as, as soon as possible. He also said you would actually possibly start seeing withholdings in the first quarter of next year if, if done properly. Also, I've worked, I've been working with Mary Ann Sabo. We are in the process of, they are getting information ready for us, for our informational campaign. I anticipate seeing a first draft of information later this week. So that's what we've done up to this point.
Any questions for Mike on any of that?
How is your fee schedule structured by the company?
I haven't gotten the proposal yet, so I don't have an answer. It's, it's, it's done per return. It's charged per return is how, how they do it, but I don't know what the, I don't know what the number is yet.
I have a remark, not a question.
Sure.
At coffee with council, we had a couple of people show up and I would encourage people to do that. The first Saturday morning, we're over at the chamber. It was great having some new faces there. One of the people had a question. She was under the impression that all five city council members were in favor of the income tax. And I made a slight correction, which I think is important. What we are in favor of is presenting it as an option to the voters. And that sounds like I'm splitting hairs, but I think it's important because frankly, I haven't, I'm, I'm not wild about, I live here, I have a business here, I work here, so it's going to impact me. I'm not wild about it, but we're trying to figure out a way to pave the roads. We're under a lot of pressure to do something and this is an option that we're exploring. And I'm not trying to speak for the other guys, but I think that we, we just saw it as something that we should present to the voters as an option. Is that clear?
All right. Item B.
Can I have a bad tone?
No.
Okay.
Item B, construction engineering for the showboat and DPW building. Michael.
Comprehensive engineering is near completing the design service components of this project. Attached in your packet were separate proposals from them for engineering services for the showboat construction documents and the renovation of the former DPW building adjacent to the showboat. These proposals will scope out services for building code compliance plumbing, fire suppression, HVAC, electrical and structural systems for the proposed DPW building. For the showboat, they propose services for the building code compliance HVAC and electrical system. If you recall, restrooms will be at the DPW building, thus no plan for running water or plumbing on boat. They will be developing construction specs and bid packages for both the showboat and DPW building. The cost for these services are the following. For the DPW building is $33,000, which would be paid for from our fundraiser proceeds, and for the showboat would be $42,000 paid from the grant proceeds. The detail, I, Ken from Comprehensive Engineering, can I, can't pronounce your last name, I'm sorry.
Rigler.
I'm sorry.
Rigler.
Rigler. From Comprehensive Engineering is here to answer any questions you might have about the proposals. I'm recommending the little city council approve the engineering services with Comprehensive Engineering for the DPW building at a cost not to exceed $33,000 and the showboat for a cost not to exceed $42,000. Ken, do you have anything to, to add as to where we're at right now with the design?
Get a, get a rough approach.
What I wanted to share with you is introduce myself, city council members and mayor and city manager. My name is Ken Rigler. I'm a licensed engineer mechanical. We have 25 hundred staff. We've been in business for 26 years. We're located in the north end of Plankton, Eaton Rapids, Michigan. We've done a number of arenas. We mainly do building construction documents. So we were retained earlier with the city to do schematic design conceptual for the DPW. And that included not only mechanical, electrical plumbing, but also we've got equipment structural that's going to be required. We're working with, the city has Mike Lynch, Michael Lynch, who's the architect in Hearthstone Design Studio. She's providing, Shannon is providing the interior design. So we're going to complete this package by bringing in the structural and mechanical, electrical plumbing engineering for the DPW. And so we looked at this as two separate projects, even though they're going to go quite concurrent. We have completed design in conceptual stage, but we want to move on into construction documents, which means preparation of documentation that can be bid and used for permitting, and we would be the mediator between yourselves and the authority of jurisdiction. The second project is the showboat that's got the most exposure and the showboat is unique. We've not done a showboat before. It is simply a building that's in the water. It's, it's going to have some unique requirements on power, electricity. There is no plumbing, as city manager Mike, Mike Burns had mentioned, but we do have quite extensive HVAC. This allows the showboat to be in operation seasonal, year round. We even have snow melt with boiler, central plant, chiller. So it's, it's going to be a complete package when we're finished here. There's a lot of coordination, not much room to run utilities and infrastructure, and that's kind of a little bit faced with, with the showboat. I myself, I was, lived in the township, city of Lowell, excuse me, it's Lowell Township, seven years. This is back through the 90s. I've since moved around a bit, but I have personal ties to the city. Being here local at one time, growing up with the showboat, I take a little pride as being a part of this team. But so I guess tonight we're just asking for approval of engineering fees that the proceed ahead and finish up with their construction documents. If there's any more questions, I'm, I'm here to try a few.
I was surprised to see snow melt on there. It's expensive to install. It's expensive to operate. I mean, are we going to turn this thing into a maintenance problem and the cost of this stuff? The chiller. Sometimes architects, and I don't know who requested this stuff, but architects seem to make things really complicated and difficult to maintain and operate. We've seen that with other city buildings in the past. I'm just concerned that we're headed down the same path with the showboat.
That's a very, very good question. Through my career, I've, I've designed ice storage systems, snow melt. We've done over 100 different snow melts. One thing I'll mention to you that I think is an ROI, I'll have a return on investment with the snow melt, is we can avoid the salt. And I truly believe in pitching the snow melt, their proven system, as long as we have the boiler for hot water heat that's onboard, it's going to be in the back of the ship or the boat. We are offering the snow melt as a bid separate for an alternate so that the city can acknowledge whether to include the snow melt as an add alternate to the contract, or if we have some budget issues, it can be peeled out. And what does that mean? Mainly, the snow up can be standalone. It's through a heat exchanger glycol system often the hot water boiler providing the heat. The controls are already there. We already have made a design criteria to integrate whatever controls are placed on the boat or in the DPW is going to be integrated to the front end system that the city currently has. So there's integration of controls. And that's important. To answer your question, we'll avoid the salt. We'll avoid, you know, short, we're concerned about the deck. And there's a safety component here, too. If we're gonna, the city wants to utilize this for a venue that's through the winter and we've got snow, we anticipate we can have that snow maintained and melted so that we're not, we're not dealing with safety issues where people are moving it from indoor to the outdoor on the deck. So I, I think there's three components, in my opinion, and I recommend the snow melt, as long as it's affordable. And it is going to be a price that we're going to have separate so we can entertain that cost. But that is going to be longevity material, B, the, the, avoiding the, the salt, and C, probably safety of occupants that are moving in and out of the boat.
Now, are you going to transfer the heat? Do we have aluminum panels or thermal mass? What is the?
We have come up with the detail. We're working with Seaply, who's providing the documents and the boat drawings, and we're really wanting to detail that. The biggest challenge we're having is the, the boat is going to come in sections. And I do not want to see my snow melt system having joints. I want to see where the manifold is with the PEX tubing that's under the deck, that's sandwiched with another applied insulation underneath it. But I don't want to see a joint. I want to see the home run hit with the PEX tubing. And we haven't, quite honestly, figured that out yet. We're still waiting for drawings from, from Seaply just to work out the details yet.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
Are we, we're going to, the DPW building, you mentioned that. So it's, is there talk of putting snow melt over there, too?
Not as of this moment, no.
Okay.
Well, we got a hot water boiler with a source of heat that's on the boat, and we don't have that at the DPW. The intent is a gas fire forester system there.
Does your structural plan involve removing or keeping that huge fireplace that's in there?
My structural plans don't address the fireplace. That's got to be a question between the city and the architect. But we've got some assumptions of mainly trying to support the openings that are being asked for the storefront facing the river. That's where our structural is supposed to, proposing most of their effort. And it looks like there might be some additional selective demolition determined by others. So that's where we come down to, if there's a question on this existing large fireplace, our structural engineer have to make a physical. The other thing is we're lacking the existing drawings. So there's going to be some, what we call exploratory in the field, chiseled away and trying to determine the, what's there.
Great. Anybody else?
Question, getting back to the boiler on the boat stuff. Is there a reason you're not doing just forced air furnaces? A lot less costly.
Yep. In fact, it is a lot less cost, and I would agree with you. When we did our schematic design, I walked in thinking forced air, and we were planning maybe two units. The problem is we, we really are restricted on ceiling heights and bulkheads. So we're going with the, the central plant boiler and chiller. It's going to allow us to use a four pipe system to, what we're going to use a conventional classroom unit ventilators, if you will, bringing our fresh air from the side of the boat. There will be some exposed louvers on the exterior of the boat, quite a bit higher than the, the watering table. But that was the direction in which the, the, the group that we were working for had chosen. But there isn't more expense in comparison to the forced air for our system. That is correct. The other issue is where to put the condensing units. They're noisy. If we went with the forced air, we're going to have to split condensing units. We figured at least two for the upper and lower levels, and we probably have a third one that would be on the top deck. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the plans, but we're kind of looking at function and use and determining where our thermostat zones are going to be. But the forced air, quite frankly, just turned out to be such a large main duct trying to go down the perimeter of the exterior walls that the bulkhead just got extremely large.
What's longevity and life of that style of system?
Which one?
The snow melt for the heating and cooling.
Well, I've been doing them for 30 years. Where I have my biggest problem, where somebody wants to cut up expansion tubing in the slab and they come through like to PEX. If I can avoid that tubing to have any joint whatsoever, so we have a manifold that has a home run hits to our snow melt zone and it's concealed up, that PEX is lasting us. Where we've had trouble with glycol is when the polyethylene is not, they end up using PVC, for example, Doug in Grand Rapids. And that glycol wants to rob the chlorine from the PVC. We're not using PVC here. It's, it's a polyethylene that's cross-linked, made specific. And I've been using this for close to 30 years for snow melt systems. And we got to make sure we got properly installed with the insulation on the backside. So we're forcing that heat up and not losing it down into the lower deck. Longevity, I, I, as long as our boiler is maintained well. And the other big thing is glycol. We've got some maintenance. We have to keep it tested to make sure we got the inhibitors and corrosion resistance, you know, maintained. And that's what there is. And I won't mention it here, that there will be a, a PM that will need to be conducted on this boiler system and this glycol heating.
Yeah, it's going to be a PM on the boat, too. I mean, every now and again, she does have to come out of the water to get service. So what, is it a yearly maintenance? Is it a two-year maintenance?
So on forced air, I look at sent every six months to a year. And we will build in our specifications to have those PMs as a part of the proposal on the bidding. So your successful contractor gets the first crack at PMing not only the forced air, the filters, your boiler, your chiller on, on the water quality, then we also look at the controls. So there's going to be a couple of proposals that will come in with bids to PM the system that we're designing. Talking about ice melt, I'm, I'm blending a couple of parts of the conversation here. We're going to have the bathrooms in the building. So when you're attending a party in February and you have to use the bathroom, you got to go across the sidewalk. Or is there going to be some kind of a lining or something? I'm just throwing it out there because this made me think that.
There's no plan for snow melt outside the boat, so you end up sold.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. First motion, comprehensive engineering for the DPW building.
I move that we accept the bid.
I'll support.
Any other discussion on the DPW building side? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle-Zansen, councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And okay, motion now for the showboat not to exceed $42,000.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Any discussion on the showboat? Sue again.
Councilmember Salzweedle-Zansen, council, councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Ken. Item C, Brandon Newhouse, change order number five. Brian.
Like, is there anything that you want to, for us to hear? Thank you again so much, Senator. Oops, for a line here. This is the wrap up, the final pieces to Broadway. So as we've all been talking about, we'd really liked to have had all this in one particular, one solid bid. We tried to keep some flexibility for the city and King Milling to work together as the site plan came together. So again, I apologize. I wish it's all in one package, but we're simply doing things as a piece deal. This is the last wrap up. As we noted before, there's some, I guess, both the east side gets top seal and seat, the west side will be paved for discussions with King Milling. We're also going to wrap up, there's that, the puddle at the south end, that we're going to fix that. That was a bad survey shot, and we're taking responsibility for that. So we're putting it in the contract only because we have to have KNR do the work and it's part of their construction work. And so the insurance and all that needs to go with it. That's the only reason we have a part of the change order. Otherwise, we would have just paid KNR directly for that, but we will be reimbursing the city for that. I guess in addition, just as a note, we talked earlier, there was, you know, we had set an original budget for engineering for the project, and because KNR got done early, we didn't need to spend the inspection dollars on that. So we did, worked with Susie and Sue and reduced that portion of our contract for that. So we didn't spend that original, I think it was the $15,000. So we didn't spend that. And then in addition, because, you know, we want to make sure that we are good working partners with the city, the inspection that we do on this last restoration, we're going to take care of. So we aren't going to be charging any of our time for that final restoration inspection with the city. That's just part of us trying to, to be good partners on the project. So other than that, the rest, it's pretty straightforward. We've coordinated with King Milling, asked them on dates, the exact dates we haven't fixed yet because we want to talk with, with King Milling and how their summer week was going. Of course, we'll wait till after youth fair as well, but the work should only take maybe a week to get done. And it just a little bit depend on the pavers, when they can get their schedule in. But we anticipate no more than a couple of weeks to wrap it all up.
The Doyle's are happy with the changes and?
Correct.
Part of the cost?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions for Brian? Motion to approve change order number five.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number five.
Sue.
Go ahead.
Susie.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle-Zansen.
All right. Don't move, you're Brian Saw Grant, update.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate, we'll have a couple of things hopefully everybody can see. We do have a couple of maps to point out, and there's one thing that I couldn't include in the package because of the video. Just wanted to show council a couple of things. This map really represents some more of the flow monitoring that we've done. If you recall, back in 2015, when we started the Saw Grant work, we were able to do flow monitoring in several portions of the, of the city. And really, the city's broken up into three major pieces, what I'll call the, the west section, which is things that go along Main and the Valley Vista neighborhood, the central district, which runs up along the west side of the river, and the east district there. And in the initial flow monitoring, we found different reactions to stormy events. And really, the two things we're looking for infiltration, which is groundwater flowing into the system, and then inflow, which is flow from catch basins and direct stormwater connections. And we did find reactions to both to varying degrees. I'll talk about the, the east side first. The east side really was made up of, I'll call two pieces. The one main piece is along Monroe, William Monroe, and that section comes out and crosses Main Street. And that piece along the river there along Monroe had some pretty good reaction to rain events, I mean, pretty instant reactions. East of that, we didn't see any reaction to rain, but there was infiltration that we found. So when we look at those flow monitors and the graphs that they create, we can see that if we have inflow, which is from a catch basin or roof drain, we get a quick spike right after we have a rain event. And I'll show, we'll show a little bit more detail in just a second, but we installed some more flow monitors. We'll show the next map shortly. Not right, not yet, Susie, thank you. But where we found some inflow directly between the alley here and High Street is where we found the, the quick reaction. And based on the rainfall that occurred then and this amount, the size of the reaction that we saw, we're looking for about a 200 by 200 square foot area. And I think because we didn't find a lot of direct connections when we did the smoke testing, Greg's right, that we probably have some roof drains that are running through trapped connections. So the smoke wouldn't go through and expose the, the roof drain, but we need to get up on like the school, the admin building roof and try to force some dye down because somewhere between the alley and High Street is about a 200 by 200 foot area that's directly connected and is pushing rainwater into the system. Now, what's, the amount of that water, the actual volume is not so high. Based on that, we've seen about, it's about 11,000 gallons in a two-inch rain, which isn't a lot compared to what the wastewater plant can handle. But the problem is, is when that rainwater hits the system, it peaks the flow really fast. And that flow uses up pipe volume and pipe capacity very quickly, which has a direct effect on the river crossing. And so we've been worried that when that pipe crossing the river gets overwhelmed with peak flow, that it's possible that sanitary water can blow off of those structures down there, the manhole structures, which is what we don't want. So that instantaneous flow, we've got to figure out where that's coming from and figure out if we can get rid of it or not, just from a pipe capacity perspective. The other thing we found is that coming down Monroe, actually, right about, well, just about in front of City Hall, and when we cross, the pipe that crosses down across Main Street, there's about 120 gallon a minute of pickup of groundwater. And that pickup changes depending on whether it's rained or not. So the groundwater rises slightly after a rain, and depending on the amount of rain, it's, the amount that it rises varies. And we've seen up to 120 gallon per minute increase after like that two-inch rain, which amounts to, in the big picture, 170,000 gallons a day down at the wastewater plant. Now, to frame what that 170,000 means is, if we took all the water use in the city from the water use records, theoretically, let's say in the wintertime, every drop of water that gets used from the water system would go into the sanitary system. There's nobody's watering lawns or washing cars. That total is around 500,000 gallons a day. So theoretically, the wastewater plant should see 500,000 gallons a day. In reality, when we started the Saw three years ago, they would see a base flow of anywhere between 800,000 to a million gallons a day. That has been increasing over the last four years as groundwater levels have been coming up. And now, I just think I saw the, the June report, base flow was somewhere around 1.3, 1.4 million gallons a day. So it just keeps creeping up as that groundwater keeps up. And that's really a, a reflection of having a system where we have clay pipes that are, you know, two foot, joints every two feet. That just, this happens. So we've been trying really hard to find where this is coming from, and we found this stretch. So we think that if we replace, or potentially line the pipe underneath Main Street to avoid a orange act, and then replace the section south of Main Street, we might be able to get rid of up to 120,000 gallons a day through all the wastewater plant. And of course, it sounds like there may be some ideas about it in Island or some other work here in Monroe, and that would be done in conjunction with that. There's also a couple of issues further up, and like we say, with that inflow issue further up, that would all become part of one project. So that's, that's a good one that we're going to want to put on the capital improvement plan as a, a right up front project. So that's a good piece to it. We also monitored on the west side of, of the city because we've got a little more of that, what I'll call a central district. So I think that next shot to... Okay, that's down. So this is, this is the one that's on the east side that we showed. So just so you know, where we did the flow monitors all the way up, we started at the top, yep, and monitored all the way from up by King Street and monitored in front of and behind each intersection. And like I said, if you keep scrolling the map up a little bit, right there at the alley at that meter 13 is where we started seeing that inflow. So meter 14 didn't see a reaction to rain really, but meter 13 has... So meter fourteen didn't see a reaction to rain really, but meter thirteen had a significant reaction. So it's in that block that we've got an issue. And then as you go further south, that's when we noticed a real pickup, especially once you cross Main Street, of that wet weather infiltration. So when we had a rain event, we, instead of a quick spike there from the rain, we saw this increase just in base flow. So it's a big chunk. So which is, that's half the, and it's, it's nice to be able to narrow that down to one spot. We'll go, I guess, to the next, so that's back. So if you saw that map, that quick flashback, we had two monitors on the west side. If you go to that, that movie, Sue. We picked, what we did is we found on, if you go to the very beginning of that thing, if, just pull that movie to the front, just to the start of it, if you go to, yeah, if you just hit there, the arrow, I think it'll restart. Or you have to drag the bar to the back. But this is examples, actually, this works too. You can see how, when they stop at a joint, this is the kinda inflow we're getting. Oh yeah, there's the front end of that pipe. Up on Foreman, so what happened is, we, we started going out during rain events and trying to chase this, and literally popping covers on manholes, observing where the flows were coming from and where we saw changes. And where we noticed a really big change is right at Foreman and Riverside Drive, that north of Foreman, it was fairly low flow, and, but, but Foreman itself had a lot of flow. And so we went back and just re-televized this, and you can see almost every joint is leaking water. And we have noticed that from 2015 to 2019, in that four-year span, we're seeing about a two-hundred gallon per minute change just in this stretch, which overall, that amounts to about two hundred thousand gallons a day. So this little stream doesn't seem like a lot, but when you do that at every joint for a six-hundred foot stretch, it adds up. So the odd part is that we only found it in the stretch from, basically from Beach to Hudson. So that whole pipe network, we finally found the stretch that seems to be really leaking. So this will be part of that, we'd recommend for replacement in the CIP. The reason we don't wanna line this is our experience has been that when we try to line sewers, it will plug the joints. And they stop the joints from leaking into the main pipeline, but every time you have a service lateral that connects, we have to cut a hole to allow that service line in. And what'll happen is, the groundwater will come through the joint in the outside, in the clay pipe, travel along the little space between the new liner and the old pipe, until it finds a spot at a lateral, and then it just pours in. So we found the liners are not super effective in stopping infiltration. So that's where pipe replacement will come into play. But again, just as an order of magnitude, this potentially represents about two hundred thousand gallons a day. So like, if we can get rid of the stuff on Monroe, get rid of the stuff on, on Foreman, we're talking potentially three hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day of groundwater that we don't have to treat, which, again, our goal, what we're really trying to get is to not have to do plant expansion if we can avoid it. That's really the big thing.
Do you know how much that equates to, like, a variable expense per day for the city to run their plant?
It's, it's not a huge expense, because you're, it doesn't add biological load, but it does, what it really is doing, I think the big thing, is potentially impacting a plant expansion requirement, because you hit a, it's not a loading, a biological loading limit you hit, it's a volumetric loading you hit. The plant can only handle so much volume through it, because that pushes, that pushes the speed at which that flow goes through the plant. That's what we're bumping up against, is that volumetric loading. So the good news is that we think we found two really good spots, big chunks that we can maybe grab out of this and incorporate into the CIP, and hopefully really set back any need for plant expansion. That's our goal.
You said that it was how much water per day?
It's about, between the two of them, about three hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day, based on the flow monitoring that we see. And the plant, the plant should see half a million gallons a day. Right now, it's seeing about one point four. So a good chunk of that is these two spots.
What's the capacity of the plant?
It's set at a, a four million gallon per day peak hour capacity, but its, its average rating is lower than that. I think it's at a one point, oh, one point five, I've got five is your average day. Yep, and then, and what happens is the DEQ does not like you to get much closer than eighty percent of that. So that's what we're bumping up against right now. Yeah, there's a difference between an average day demand and a peak hour.
I can definitely see where if we can cap off, stop three hundred and twenty thousand gallons of water, that's a huge money on the plant expansion.
Yep.
And we don't need to push that any faster than it's already done, right?
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the saw expense that you guys have been seeing in the invoic these last couple of months is just we're televising the heck out of everything to try to find these, desperately trying to find these spots. And we're lucky we've got a couple of really good smoking guns here. Yeah, it's a lot of water. And it, it's amazing how fast, and so just seeing the difference between 2015 and 2019 of two hundred gallons per minute coming from Foreman, that, that was amazing. And what's, that's been kinda nice with the saw, is we've been able to do this over the course of these three, four years, and see that difference. Because if you just take snapshots, you don't get that differential. So it's been a good program, I think, more about than anything.
If we find out over here that the admin building's not part of the problem, then what do we do?
We'll still look. It's, it's in this block somewhere, so we have to find it, and that this is the area to concentrate on. So it's either the admin building, or something else is trapped into it. We suspect the admin only because it's in the right location, it's got the right roof size area. It, it makes some sense, but we wanna talk to the superintendent, get up on the roof and pour some dye in. So that's really what we need to do next, is get dye poured in all the roof drains. And it's gonna come out somewhere. And then, then as Greg knows, with plumbing, you just, you gotta figure how hard is it gonna be to separate it? You know, if we're talking about the buildings across the street, that's, that could be some major problem, because it's so integral. We'll just have to see where it shows up.
I think the admin building was built, two sections, it had two water services, one coming from the east on Washington Street, one from the west.
Yep.
And they abandoned one and just went to one meter, but you may find the sewers the same way.
Yeah, it's possible. And well, and on their east, they have the, there's two sewers out in the street there too. One, that was the original nineteen thirty-five, and another one that, I don't recall what year it was built. There was a second year that then they only ran lados to one side of the street with it. So there's, there's some weirdness going on there too. So again, thank you, thanks Sue, appreciate. Just wanna show you, that's the kinda stuff we're running into, but luckily, I think we found two really good spots that I think we can get some good bang for the city's block allowance.
Any other questions for Brian? Put that in.
Thank you.
That is a motor, or I'd say a wheeled, truck-driven camera system right there.
Yes.
Runs down to there.
Yep, definitely.
Oh, that's not as exciting as...
I'm sorry.
Roll the flies down.
It should be a little...
Yeah.
All right, new business.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Like the sale.
Yeah.
A lot of wind in those sewer pipes.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Ordinance nineteen oh four, income tax amendment. Michael?
Our charter amendment and ballot language have both been approved by Attorney General Dana Nessel and Governor Gretchen Whitmer. During the review process, they did require one modification to the ordinance nineteen dash oh two approved in May pertaining to this. Attached is ordinance nineteen dash oh four, which clarifies when an income tax would become effective being upon the addition of chapter nine A consisting of nine A dash one. Power to tax and administer to the Lowell City Charter should change to be approved by the city voters at the general election to be held on November fifth, two thousand and nineteen. I'm recommending for the Lowell City Council to approve ordinance nineteen dash oh four as presented. Dick, Dick worked a lot on this, and you can explain it a little bit better.
The only change to the ordinance that you adopted in May, if you have a copy of it there, is to add at the end of the, the paragraph, "to be submitted for approval of the city voters at a general election to be held on November fifth, two thousand and nineteen." In other words, they wanted to say specifically, this ordinance would only be effective upon approval in November of the proposal, rather than five years from now, for example.
That's a...
Good suggestion, and I think makes it clear that it really does apply to what will be on the ballot in November. And recall, there'll be two ballot proposals. One will be to enact the income tax by adoption of this ordinance, by the way, and the second will be the rollback of property taxes. One, of course, would be dependent upon the others.
All right, motion to approve ordinance nineteen oh four, adding election day to the charter.
So moved. I'll second that.
Any other questions for Michael? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedle is absent. Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, I don't know where we're at. Item B, salt spreader for the number sixteen, Ralph Ralph.
Good evening, council. Within your packet, you should have a memo. We're looking to replace one of our, one of two salters. This is the second of two salters that we're replacing. The first one was replaced last fiscal year, so we're coming, council, to see if they approve that. The current salter is thirty-one years old. It's been an excellent salter, but it's, it served its purpose and its light, so it's time for new replacements.
You're fabricating everything, right? Just can't get replacement parts anymore?
That is starting to become a problem, yes. The new salter that we're looking at is an auger conveyor type system to bring the salt from the hopper to the spreader that throws it on the ground, which is a vast improvement over the current salter configuration that we have now. The current salter uses a chain mechanism that, of a conveyor system that's like a moving floor. And without fail, when we need the salter the most, and it's a blizzard and the salt hopper is full, that chain has a tendency to break. Then by hand, DPW staff has to dig all the salt and agri it out of the salter and then replace that chain. So it's a very labor-intensive process, and it always seems to happen at the worst time. So over the thirty-some-odd years, there's been revisions and revisions on the engineering design, and so this new salter will have an auger design. This seems to be a much more reliable system. All the other communities around the area and the Kent County Road Commission, they've seemed to gravitate to this design, so.
And this isn't my deal thing, right? You have a bidding process?
Yes.
All right. Recommendation to purchase the salt spreader not to exceed twenty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Any other questions for Ralph on that one? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedle is absent. Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right, Ralph again, number fifty-three, mower replacement.
Yes, this piece of equipment is primarily used at the cemetery for Stanley Roy. The current mower is, oh, it's a two thousand, so nine years. We expected to use it for seven years. It's worked out really well, we pushed it under a couple of years. It's starting to show its age. The city staff has done an excellent job keeping care of the current mower, and our plans are, is to move it down into like a backup position, and to use it at our water plant and our wastewater treatment plant, and some mower practices are duties there. But as far as the primary mower, it's starting to see its age and wear and tear. So this is, this is primarily a scheduled replacement. Our desire is to replace it with primarily the identical mower. They've proven to be very quick quality mowers, repair maintenance is very well, staff has been happy with work that they've been providing over the years, so.
All right, recommendation then for the new mower not to exceed seventy-seven hundred fifty-nine dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
All right, any other questions for Ralph about the mower? Suzie?
Councilmember Salzwiedle is absent. Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. You're free to go. Item B, library temperature control system, Michael.
Last fall, the city alone received a grant from the Lowell County Foundation to replace the aging temperature control building management system at the Yingleheart Library in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. The building management system at the library is the original system from nineteen ninety-four and is obsolete. The city sought a quote from a company to install and upgrade to the current system, and from the company that currently supplies the system for City Hall. The quotes were for two different systems, and they were the following. MCMI Facility Automation from Sterling Heights at fifteen thousand three hundred dollars, and Entertemp out of Kentwood at twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Entertemp currently is the building management system for this building. It should also be noted that in our grant budget, we accounted for approximately three thousand dollars for IT services from Adora Technologies in the grant. The cost for the system from MCMI will allow us to use the eighteen thousand for the grant and complete this with no more than three hundred dollars in funds from the data processing fund if needed. I recommend the Lowell City Council enter into an agreement with MCMI Facility Automation to install and upgrade a temperature control building management system for the Yingleheart Library at cost not to exceed fifteen thousand three hundred dollars.
This is all grant money?
Yes, the whole thing is grant money.
All right.
With exception of maybe three hundred dollars.
We have a copy of the low quote, we don't have a copy of the other quota, who's citing?
I only put the low quote in.
Okay. Additional work, other things are comparable, or?
They're totally separate systems, is really what they are. The system that being, Rich had worked on this before he left, and the system that he priced was, was almost, it was the upgrade to the original system as to how, and how he got this company involved. And then I, not knowing, asked, that wasn't really familiar with exactly everything Rich did with it, I brought, I brought in our company who does it here to price it, and it was substantially higher, to the point where the grant wouldn't cover it. So that's why I did what I did.
Has this system been in place in other buildings for a while, or is this new technology?
It's a good question. I don't necessarily know the answer. My understanding is it was, it was the upgraded version for whatever we had at the last building, when it was there. There's the sys, he couldn't, we couldn't get parts for it anymore. It's something that we've had to, we know we've had to, Rich had to endure quite a bit of issues last summer with it, and that's where we went and got the grant.
Very good.
All right, I'll look for that motion then, to enter into agreement from MCMI.
So moved.
I'll support.
Any other questions for Mike? Sue?
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzwiedle is absent.
All right, last one in new business, murders officer delegate, Michael again.
The twenty nineteen U.S. Local Employees Retirement System Annual Meeting is being